You waited on the please.
Welcome to the seventh meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please keep your cell phones off. And when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and speak into the microphone. Uh calling agenda item number one.
Minutes.
Minutes uh then uh the minutes of the thirty ninth and um of the five one twenty five and forty first five such fifteen meetings uh as previously circulated. Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the thirty ninth and the forty first meeting as previously circulated.
Second. Been moved and seconded for uh approval of the minutes. Uh any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the minutes are approved. Calling agenda item number one, applications number two five dash zero three nine three six from Kids Fit Foundation.
Hi Sean Maguire S E A N.
Oh please take a seat.
Yeah.
Oh no, over here in the front row.
Uh Sean Maguire uh S E A N M A G U I R E.
Okay. You're okay with uh submissions that you have and?
Uh yes, I also have a couple of extra documents. Um I don't know if it's uh required, but we also have a Honolulu Police Department hired uh for the event uh four officers and one sergeant in addition to our uh normal security.
Okay, I mean if you your packet seems very thorough, can you walk us through your event?
Well, our event is a daytime uh outdoor uh obstacle course racing company. Uh at the end of the race, there's a festival with um you know, food, beverage, merchandise sales, uh announcements like trophies given out throughout the day. Um it's a daytime uh daytime event. It doesn't really go too late into the night. Um it's pretty uh pretty straightforward. Uh I've been doing for the last fifteen years. It really hasn't ever been an issue at any any of these races.
Okay, Mr. Questions?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero three nine three six.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero three nine three six. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the applications.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Calling agenda item number two, application numbers two six dash zero zero one five four dash one to two six dash zero zero one five four dash one five, the National Guard Conference Corporation of Hawaii Inc. And as a disclosure, I was a former guardsman, but this will not interfere with my they need to make a decision on this matter.
I too am a retired guardman and they won't interfere with my ability to make exact decisions.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're back.
Good afternoon Chair, members of Commission, Greg Michalco, authorization appearing on behalf of the applicant. Here we see the investigation report, no comments there to changes or additions.
Commissioners, any questions? We've done this one a lot.
I have none.
There's only one question, council did they finally get this thing settled between a nonprofit versus a?
It's a there's an internal situation which I'm not really clear on right now. We'd have to clarify itself. And it just depends on the board, what they were gonna do and certain members making a decision which way they're gonna take over.
But that will in no way interfere with the events.
Oh, no, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve applications number two six dash zero zero one five four dash one through two six dash zero zero one five four dash one five inclusively.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero one five four dash one, the two six dash zero zero one five four dash one five inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, number.
Three, yeah, so that. Yeah, okay. Calling agenda item number three, applications number two six dash zero zero one five five dash one to two six dash zero zero one five five dash six eight, M Magura Limited.
Good afternoon Chair, members of Commission, Greg Michalco, authorization appearing on behalf of the applicant. Again, received the investigation report, no changes there too. We thank the commission for taking this matter.
Questions?
I have no questions. Motion to approve applications number two six dash zero zero one five five one to two six dash zero zero one five five dash six eight inclusively.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero one five five dash one to two six dash zero zero one five five dash six eight inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four, application number two six dash zero zero two six seven, Events International.
Thank you. Aloha, uh Rick Schneider, CEO of Events International.
Okay, for the next three with Mr. Schneider, I'll make the uh disclosure that I serve on a board with the applicant, but it will not interfere with my ability to be objective in this matter. Okay. Uh. Okay with your submissions?
Um yeah, the first one is um Whiskey Affair, which is an event. We've done three, three years running. This is an industry event for the for the bar and restaurant industry uh sponsored by some Tory. Um where it's rinse and repeat. It's exactly what we've done in the past. Uh the same security, fine entertainment and and all that. We've had no problems.
Misses questions?
No, I have none of that. Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero two six seven.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero two six seven. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number two six dash zero zero two six eight from Events International Inc.
And I'm not sure which one this is. Is this Drip Nick or Boots and Beer?
Drip Nick.
Drip Nick.
Drip Nick, thank you. Um Drip Nick is also an event that we've uh produced three years running, four years running. Um and it again, it's the same footprint as we did last year. It's a um sort of family and but not, no, it's an over twenty one event for uh primarily African American community and uh Smith, a really great event every year. We're doing things pretty much the same, expecting the same kind of attendance between four and six hundred.
Any commissioners questions?
So the only question I had is I know that the space is very large and it states, right, you have twenty security guards but no special duty law enforcement. Do you have any thoughts or thinking about because the space is so large, maybe looking into getting a special law enforcement?
We do have special duty with the Sheriff's Department.
Okay. Alright, that was my only comment.
Good.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero two six eight.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero two six eight. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, uh the application is approved. Calling agenda item number six, application number two six dash zero zero two seven zero from Events International Inc.
Um this again is another event that we've actually done three times. Uh two times in the past, this will be the third iteration of Boots and Beer. It's a country music event. Uh we're expecting about twenty five hundred, between twenty five hundred and three thousand, which we've serviced in the past. Um the setup is again exactly what we've done in the past. We actually did it in April, I believe, of this year. Uh it's been very successful and uh twenty one and over. Uh special duty by the Sheriff's Department, same uh same kind of regime that we do when we work at the Bishop Museum.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero two seven zero.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero two seven zero. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number seven, applications number two six dash zero zero three four two dash one to two six dash zero zero three four two dash three zero inclusive from Rolla, Roll Dan Reyes. Left.
Hello Commissioners, Mike Maturo, counsel for the applicant, uh Roll and Race. To my right is the applicant and owner, Roll and Race, R O L D A N and then Race, R E Y E S.
Okay. Questions?
I don't have any, no, I didn't have any.
No, nothing.
Motion to approve applications number two six dash zero zero three four two dash one through two six dash zero zero three four two dash thirty inclusively.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero three four two dash one to two six dash zero zero three four two dash three zero inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, application number two six dash zero zero three four seven dash one to two six dash zero zero three four seven dash two one. V S E Capital Grill Waikiki LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Stephanie Colby here representing the Capital Grill. Uh to my right is Deborah Espino, E S P I N O. She's the Business Development Manager for Union Mac. This is just a continued alcohol service at the new Capital Grill that was just built.
Is this the same Capital Grill that's a nationwide Capital Griller?
Yes, yes. I know, I've never been in that one either.
I've been, it's good.
Uh I guess on our map, there's there's red delineation and I'm missing it or?
I don't see, I don't see, I don't see any. Oh, the whole premise?
Yeah, so two questions, I guess. One is going to be um right, we have the certification of meaning received by the neighborhood board. That's pending, I see. So you get that, that'll be in?
Actually, I turned it in last week.
It might have been, we already, the report was already either posted or something. And then on your floor plan is the um designated alcoholic serving area, the whole floor plan, because this one does not have the um red delineation on there. You might, it might have been on a different one.
Yeah, I apologize for that Commissioners. If if needs be, I can give one to you.
I mean, I'm sure we would like to have it at the commission. I just, we just need to know, it's gonna be the whole floor plan, correct?
The whole floor plan.
Okay.
I'll get that to you.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Beyond that, I don't have any other questions.
That's me.
Motion to approve applications number two six dash zero zero three four seven dash one through two six dash zero zero three four seven dash two one inclusively.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve applications number C six dash zero zero three four seven dash one to two six dash zero zero three four seven dash two one inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number nine, applications number two six dash zero zero three eight one dash one to two six dash zero zero three eight dash two seven, S G Hospitality Inc.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the applicant. I want to thank Indus Gear Sato for getting this on the agenda. We have no corrections or additions to it.
Uh first date is August fourteenth.
Today, I'm gonna pick it up this, if this is approved, yep.
Getting pretty close on the permanent?
Nowhere near.
Hmm.
But that's something we'll deal with.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Good.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero three eight one dash one through two six dash zero zero three eight one dash two seven inclusively.
Second. So been moved and seconded to approve applications number two six dash zero zero three eight one dash one to two six dash zero zero three eight one dash two seven inclusive. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Why not get your license?
Yeah.
Okay, calling agenda item number ten, application number two five dash zero zero three zero two, Y C Hospitality Inc.
Hello.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Subbukli authorization for the applicant, Y C Hospitality Inc. To my right is Mr. Jake Kong, K O N G. He's the Vice President of the applicants. We have reviewed the investigative report. We have no comments uh at this time or revisions at this time. We are open to any questions.
Disclosure that we served on the commission of the uh council.
So yeah, so I'll make the same disclosure. I also serve on the commission with council and it will not affect my ability to be impartially deciding on this matter, yes.
Same disclosure.
Alright.
My Commissioners, questions?
I have no questions. Motion to approve application number two five dash zero zero three zero two.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two five dash zero zero three zero two for uh public hearing. Any names or reservations seeing none, I ask about I, application is approved with public hearing.
Thank you Commissioners.
Uh calling agenda item number eleven, application number two six dash zero zero two five one, Oikee Ma LLC.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Stephanie Colby representing Oikee Ma. Uh to my right is Mr. Jonathan Yano, Y A Mendo. He is the manager uh for uh one of the managers for Hybride. This is for catering license for a single event that's gonna be happening uh on August twenty second over at the Bishop Museum. Uh actually in there, uh there's a new store that's going up, the grand opening for uh Shop Pacifica. It's by Namia, it's the um concert for native Hawaiian advancement. So it's a pretty cool event. Uh they're expecting about hundred fifty, maybe two hundred people there.
Okay.
Alright, I have no questions.
No questions.
Any security plans?
Uh there should be uh two sheriffs, two hybrid security. Their minds are in all areas and make sure everybody's safe.
We'll also be using wristbands.
Wristbands for all over twenty one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero two five one.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero two five one. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number twelve, application number two six dash zero zero three zero three, The Bankers Club Inc.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Myra Kirby, M Y R A, last name K I R B Y.
And I would make the disclosure that I'm a member of the Bankers Club and occasional invitee to this. Uh.
An occasion.
Um Commissioners, any questions? Oh, and they will not interfere with my ability to be impartial.
No.
You have any security for the event?
Yes, we have our security officers as well at the H P D.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
I have none. Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero three zero three.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve applicant number two six dash zero zero three zero three. Any names or reservations seeing none, I ask about I, the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Doesn't see it in the, somebody's evidence of security.
I know. Obviously, uh uh calling agenda item number thirteen, application number two six dash zero zero three two five, Zetan. Did I say that correctly?
Zetan.
Ah, awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, Kenneth Warpeering for the applicant, my right is Makoto, Asigaw, M A K O T O. They said H A S E G A W E, the president of uh Zetan Inc. Um wanting one change to the investigative report, and we had informed licensing that we wanted the start date uh to be September twenty second instead of September one, and it would run until uh September twenty one, two thousand and twenty six. So changing the start date from the first of September to September twenty second and running one year.
And so we'll need um.
Motion to amend the agenda. Hold on. I'm gonna make a motion for um agenda item number thirteen, application number two six dash zero zero three two five to amend the agenda on to change the start date from Monday, September first, twenty twenty five to what is the twenty first? Is it a Monday?
Should be twenty, uh a Tuesday, right? Three, three weeks in a day.
So the twenty first is a Sunday. September.
Yeah, the report says Monday, September one.
Right, but you wanna change it to the twenty eighth, right?
Twenty second, twenty second.
Twenty second.
Monday, twenty second.
Okay, so change uh Monday, September first, twenty twenty five to Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five to Monday Sep- or Sun, Monday, September twenty first, twenty twenty six, is that what you're saying?
It's correct.
Okay, so that's my motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda item number thirteen uh for a start date of Monday, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, and an end date of Sunday's uh September twenty first, twenty twenty six. Any names or reservations seeing none, I ask about I, the agenda item is amended. Now uh now we're uh calling back agenda item number thirteen uh for the substance. Are you paying for this all at once or you're doing the monthly installment thing?
We do monthly install.
Okay.
Okay. I have no questions, no questions. Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero three two five as amended.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero three two five as amended. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you very much. Uh calling agenda item number fourteen, application number two six dash zero zero three seven zero, Sedexo America LLC. Oh.
Aloha, my name is Darlene Leones, L E O N E S, Catering Manager for Sedexo at U H one oh.
Commissioners, questions?
So I guess the the so it talks about in your thing that it's a beer garden and VIP sponsor tents, so they're gonna be all within your um red in marked areas that are listed on your floor plan, correct?
That's correct.
And then they'll be banding or checking IDs as they come in or once they get inside and they're going to order?
Um as they come in.
As they come in, okay. Alright.
Will you be adding private security or campus security?
Oh, so we actually um U H hired private security. Um they're using D P S security, which is U H um security and then um H P D as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have no other questions.
No other questions.
Motion to approve application number two six dash zero zero three seven zero.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve application number two six dash zero zero three seven zero. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is you. Calling agenda item number fifteen, request number two six dash zero zero two two four, El State LLC.
Good afternoon Commissioners, uh Darren Ogino, co-owner of El State LLC, doing business as Village Bottle Shop and Tasting Run. Last name is Ogino, O G I N O. Uh we are having our Oktoberfest this year. Uh we've been holding this event for about eight years now. And um it's the same format that we've had for the last four years. We're extending the property out and containing the crowd with uh steel barricades. We have three entry and exit points each uh hosted by uh private security uh issuing uh bans for alcohol for those over the age of twenty one. Um the event we have, we're requesting from nine AM to eleven fifty nine P M, but the event is really from four P M to nine P M. Uh it's more for us to allow setup and then breakdown of the item, yeah.
I do have one question. Why is there a circle around the bathroom in red?
I'm not sure.
Okay, probably remove that from your license area.
Yeah, it looks like that's the licenser.
Yeah, like you can go there to drink.
It's probably meant it's not the licenser.
Yeah.
That's probably, yeah.
Yeah, got it. Okay.
No questions.
Yeah, I have no questions.
Look.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero two two four.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero two two four. Any names or reservations seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved.
Thank you.
Goodbye. Uh calling agenda item number sixteen, request number two six dash zero zero two two nine, Aia Fish Market, Waikiki.
Good afternoon again, Chairman, Members of Commission, Greg Michalco appearing on behalf of the advocacy and applicant. We receive the rest of the fort have most things there too, and we thank uh Investigation Sato for putting this matter on the agenda in expedited manner.
Misses.
It's a temporary increase, right?
What was gonna happen is next door was a restaurant to shut down. Point is gonna, we're gonna we've I believe filed an uh application to extend the premises permanently. But that takes a year. And what this does is, I I believe they're using the Lanai area which you're using already. So this increases the Lanai area space that they'll be using it for itself. And it is elevated above ground. I believe it's the the foundation itself is four feet above ground, plus there's fencing gates and stuff. So if the commission is concerned about, you know, kind of what people walking by, grabbing, what kind of situation, it's not likely. Not likely.
I have no question.
No.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero two two nine.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero two two nine. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I ask about aye, the uh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, request number two six dash zero zero three seven seven, Uncles at Pearl Ridge LLC. Love.
Commissioner. Chan Yang.
Right.
Mr. Yang, any reason for the? Delay?
It's a rookie mistake, it's the first year of the transition, so it got, you know, it got overlooked.
Ticklerizer for next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. No questions.
I have no questions.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero three seven seven.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero three seven seven. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I ask about aye, the request is approved.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner.
Calling agenda item number eighteen, request number two six dash zero zero three seven four. Uh, three, four bar and grill LLC.
Yeah, I promise is the last thing I said. Um, we're just uh trying to get the waiver of the rule, um, I thought that we had submitted in time where it's still for like a few days, so I apologize. Um, so we're we're having to request the waiver so that we can do the application for the temporary and also the. I have no question.
Yes.
Motion to approve request number two six dash zero zero three seven four.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve request number two six dash zero zero three seven four. Any nays or reservations seeing none, I ask about aye, the request is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like to call out of order, agenda item number twenty, administrator. Review of the twenty fiscal year twenty five stats.
Good afternoon Commissioner Salpatilos, Administrator Honolulu Commissioner. Doug, if you don't want pulling the. The PBS off. Yeah, I think uh I I I believe you are all very familiar with this particular uh. Rap, and that we've covered this before and that it just basically shows that for the. Period fiscal year twenty twenty two to fiscal year twenty twenty five. Uh, in all those years, uh, the number of applications received. Have uh uh have been greater than the number of applications uh. Completed with results in 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 a in a backlog in terms of doing transfer applications. Uh. And that that really has, and the and the interest for applications as well as uh ad removes and stock transfer. We've 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 focused on those items as indicative of the issues uh uh that that we face in terms of the backlog. Doug, next slide please.
So, I I think in in terms of 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 completed applications, uh. Uh, you you all know that we we go by the by the philosophy first in first out. And from my perspective, uh, and that i- if we are doing that, the the oldest item should be moving out. And uh, yeah, I think uh some expectation in my part, as I look through the data month over month, then. I would expect that at least in terms of the mean. And the median of completed applications, the number should be going down over as time goes by. That said, however, when you look at the actual numbers that that we see here. It 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 fancies from month to month, uh, and I think it's indicative, or perhaps indicative of the fact that. Uh, you know, not every application, not. Some items for that that are necessary for the for the investigation to be completed, not being submitted. Uh, uh, and so it it lengthens the time, but in in which uh. Uh, applications uh have to uh are investigated, but let's spend this time, but for applicants to be be completed. Uh, I think also, please, please understand that this is from from beginning to end, and so there are some of some of the. Some of the days, these uh, when you look at it, uh, is is the result of statutory requirements and the timeframe between preliminary and 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 public hearings. Uh, but you know, that was just an expectation in my part, but uh and that didn't hold for permission. I mean, you see, you know, eventually that that uh down the by June, by the end of the fiscal year. Uh, the the in terms of averages down to three hundred forty, three fifty one. Uh, but anyway, it it just, the 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 data just didn't uh support my. Belief that as we move forward, that uh, the 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 the. The number of days should, the average number of days should be should be drawing down. Doug, next slide please. So I think, yeah, I I I also showed this to you uh a while back, and this is a full fiscal year comparison as opposed to uh, you know, a a half year versus a full year. Um, uh, full disclosure that uh in terms of 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 the of the numbers reported here, I I wasn't able to make everything foot. Uh, so there's some discrepancy between, you know, uh, numbers here and some numbers in other cases. But I think it also shows that how things have changed for us and the fact that. You see for the 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 ad removes, the alterations, uh, the in the permanent increases, uh. Permanent reductions as as well as stock transfers, you're seeing significant changes or some significant numbers in region. Uh. Simply because I think uh you we, the the agency hard uh to uh. To examiners who have been focused on these things and understand as well that as we went through as uh. The the agency has also adopted at some point in time, the the strategy to deal, try to deal with the. New and transfer applications and and kind of. Not focus on on the requests, and so you you see that, you see improvements in terms of of completions in in terms of the requests. And I think that's the that's uh, that's the that's due to the increased capacity. Uh, in terms of 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 staff with nationally focus on these particular requests. Doug, next one please. And so uh at the end of the year, um, you know, uh, we looked at uh. The number of, when you took, when you take a look at it, at at the. Applications that we're concerned about, uh, you see in terms of the ad removes, so we completed eighty. Uh, with a mean, we with it was an average age of three hundred and twenty two days, median lo- lower than that. New and transfers, then a hundred and seven were completed. Uh, with a mean of three hundred, with an average of three hundred and fifty six, median three three. Three hundred and three stock transfers, uh, twenty four hundred were completed, and the mean days were two hundred and forty eight and one hundred and ninety seven. Uh, I think that I, i- in terms of this, I think that this will be good to compare to what we've looked like in two thousand, at the end of twenty twenty six. This is the end of this coming year. Uh, I think one of the things that we've been concerned about is the the time it takes to investigate. Uh, uh, applications, and so you see on the table there, when when we when we look at. The the applications that are still in the system or have not been completed, but are still under investigation at the end of the year. Uh, you see that the numbers and 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 the average days of the average age that the applications have. Uh. You can see at the end there, you know, uh. Lower two hundred and twenty four days, seven hundred and ninety days for for new and transfer, I think it it's indicative of. Again, it sort of shows a uh. A a different idea, because when you look at the monthly, you know, did you see that decrease, but you're seeing that decrease at the end of year. I think it it'll be interesting to see what the end of year rates will be like. Next year and whether or not we're we drive that down even more. Uh, but I think, you know, uh. I think it also shows that somehow or another, I think we may have to get away from logistic dipping about building these things. Uh, like for example, in terms to add the moves, so my observation. Uh, in uh in in my two years here. Has been that when when you when the commission discusses how the moves and you're concerned about what the. Who 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 the principles are at the end of the of the of the timeframe, you always ask the question, is this representative of what we want here? Uh, it's that, it suggests to me that perhaps it would be, it would be. A way to reduce that, the 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 time that it takes to to investigate, maybe to say. Uh, we're concerned about A, which was the re- record that we had previously, however, number of years that came to be, came to pass, we are now concerned about. Z. And, you know, is C correct, and since we don't do uh multiple violations. Does it make sense to adopt the philosophy of like, hey, let's look at A, let's look at. At Z and and if there's a difference, it's a violation, uh, that may reduce the time that that's taken to to look at the applications. Also, when when you look at new and transfers, I think one of the things that that is of a concern, self-concern is whether or not. Uh, applicants are submitting documents and information in a in a time of eleven. Uh. And maybe that's one of the things that we need to do is that to be more. Cognizant of what's going on in an application. And maybe follow up uh and say, hey, you know, for example, I I I think. I I don't know if you, I I provided with some with some uh cases where there were some wait times that are pretty significant, I thought. Uh. And and just and with without knowing the particular circumstances of those of those activities. One would think like, you know, does it help that we let the applicants know that that case has been assigned? Uh, you know, almost immediately after it does happen. Do we require, do we then follow up thirty days later and say, hey, we've taken a uh a cursory review? This is what we, this is what we're finding, uh, you know, just to get the ball rolling and, you know, and see where are those responses are there. And at the very end too, if 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 there is a gap, then at least you've you've dealt with some aspect of the application that's already done and taken care of. And I think uh. It's one of the things, and also on on the other side of that. I know that we uh, I think I reported in the fact that we try, we we are trying to purge. The system of old applications greater than three hundred and fifty five days. Question becomes to, can we now apply that philosophy or that process to? The new ones. That say, you know, uh, we are going to be more rigid in terms of, hey, you need to apply, you need to provide us with as much as possible. Feeling to do that, then go through the process of withdrawing it and then. Uh, and then allowing them to apply again once uh they're they're ready to move forward.
So, administrative. So in a nutshell, you as administrator. Are you satisfied with the numbers that you're making some progress?
It seems, it appears that we are, um. But that said, I I think we need to make sure that we set goals. Uh, for example, I think, you know, uh, you look at. And you see this all the time with with temporaries where they have, uh. You know, two one hundred and twenty day temporary uh periods, temporary less periods. Does it make sense to say, hey, let's adopt that as like an initial goal, that we try to finish everything before the. About two hundred and forty days, right? That's eight months, right? And and how do we go about doing that to make sure that we actually do finish our thing? Within those two hundred and forty days, given the fact that we do have the stock. Right, and how do we, uh, and and I think it's it's up to us to try to figure out a way that where we can. Do that, where we can say we can begin to compress and and move, you know, move move applications forward in a more rapid manner. Uh, I think, I think, I personally think that we as an agency also owed. Uh, responsibility to the applicants, not only to be thorough in terms of protecting the the public interest. But also to be efficient or expedient, to allow them to be in business as quickly as possible. With with a license that's less expensive than what happens with a temporary suspension. Uh, I. I think, you know, I I think we need to inject some type of. I uh, of a uh, I put the idea that we need to be somewhat efficient. And we need to be able to uh. Process the applications. I- i- in 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 a way that that that's, you know, takes a little bit shorter, I I I think that that we were, and if you look at the data, it's like, yes. It took that long complete, uh, I mean, I understand that those are under investigation, we subject your time, that's what we're doing, so. Yeah, so you look at the end, it's three, three hundred and fifty six days to complete from beginning to end.
So could you use all this data as a baseline to establish some type of strategic?
It is that, and that's why I I I say, uh, I'm talking about maybe we we did some goals, it's not gonna be policy, just an internal agency goal. Say, hey, it makes sense that we should try to do to 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 finish these things within those two one hundred and twenty day periods. Uh. That seems to be a a rational break. And maybe it may be aspirational for all I know, but I think having that goal will will be helpful. And then, and have us as a team discuss how we can do that. Uh, you know, we've float, there have been ideas floated and so on, but I think, you know, for 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 me, philosophically, I I tend to be really collaborative, and so I would like. To have the input from 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 the licensing session as well as how we're going to do this, I think. It, you know, it 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 just makes sense to have uh their ideas about how we can move the, we we can move them going forward.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking him. You can use a lot of this data as a baseline to establish some type of strategic plan and focus?
I think you you look at, you you look at the data and 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 you just say, hey, three hundred and fifty six days to get a license, that's a long time. Uh, granted that, you know, uh, we lost uh. One third of our of 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 our uh investigative staff, uh. Due to uh, due to, I'll call it separations and 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 long term leave. Uh. But that said, I I I think it's also because of that, the 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 changing environment, I think we also need to change a little bit, it's like. Yes, we are protecting the public, and that's that's really, don't get me wrong, that's really important, but. You know, we we know the staffing is 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 lower now, but also we also know that the number of applications continue to rise in the back of history. The question becomes for us. Do we change mindsets and become more efficient or continue with with this? What we what what the data suggests will be ongoing and a continuing in uh and a continuing gap between. What we can do and what's what's coming in.
So, so I appreciate getting these numbers and it helps us in terms of getting a vision of where we are. Um, the first slide in term, in terms of the three items, ad removes, stock transfers, and and new and transfer license. Certainly, once you submit your paperwork, delays on the part of the liquor commission doesn't have a material. Um. Uh, harm the applicant, right? But the new and transfers are the ones that are really harming um the the licensee uh population.
And I think I think that may have the reasoning behind the the focus on new and transfers versus requests.
And and so I think what would be good in your completed and new transfer application by month. Is to also have the backlog of how many, because they're piling up, right? Um, if you look at the aggregate year over year, they are kind of piling up.
So what remains for that month, I suppose.
Right, so what remains, and then people drop out, so those are the other two that were perhaps missing on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
But I think uh. One of the ways that I've typically looked at making the systems better, it's people, process, technology. And certainly, um, at least for me, looking at the technology side is my um strength, and we're looking at making those improvements. Um, in the upcoming changes to the LCIS section. On the people's side, I mean, that's squarely in your department to try to get people, and we realize that getting people is very difficult. Um, but to any extent that we can help you with that, or you need any assistance from us. I I'm certain we're all on board, and then the process, I think, you know, we've. At the same process for a long time, it's obviously um not serving the public interest. Uh, in the way it should, it's not responsive, so to what degree can we utilize and change the processes like? I think the discretion of the investigators, certainly we don't want to give them too much, but if they're held up. With a rule. with a rule that we can waive at the, you know, under twenty days or two hundred and forty days, if those are the things that are holding up a license and that's something that we can you know, hear and perhaps brave, that might be a good way to get through this glut of, of stalled licenses. So anything that you can do in these areas, I think would be, you know, something that would be appreciated by everyone and something that, you know, quite frankly, as we go into the evaluation, that's something that we'll take into consideration.
And, and I think we're, 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 we're trying to do that, we're, we're trying to hire people and understand that the ability to, to hire individuals who can perform the responsibilities of, uh, licensing control investigator three, uh, is somewhat limited because of the, of, of the, of the minimum requirements of, of the job. But that said, we also know that, you know, uh, that perhaps in the, the, uh, the, the examiners have the ability that they, they gain the experience and necessary to, to qualify for that. And maybe then, they, that may well be a, a way by which we, we recruit, right? But that said, uh, it's, it's a long, it's a long process. There's a, there's a requirement of at least two years of regulatory experience. Uh, that, that's, that's difficult for us to, to see. And, and, but, but I think we, we understand that and, and we're trying to, to fill the gap. Because we understand it's not just going to be a question of process changes, but also a question of having capacity.
Right. I think one of the things you noted in terms of, uh, uh, stock transfers jumping from A to Z, we don't need to know all of the little bits and pieces that happen necessarily. Because it's kind of water under the bridge at this point, and we're trying to get through a backlog. Uh, I think those types of efficiencies that you can bring forward, I think we would be very amenable to, uh, embracing that.
Yeah, I, it's, it's just a, an observation on my part, uh, you know, not, it's just anecdotal. This one, but just, just seeing the, what you're, what the commission itself is considering that. Does it make sense to just say, hey, there's a difference between A and Z? Uh, we, we don't. Well, I have not seen, uh, the commission address multiple violations for what happened between A and Z. It's just A and Z.
Mr. President, questions?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, uh, Minister, if you don't mind. Two chairs comments, as, as you take a look, I mean, we see the hard numbers, right? And we're comparing a year over year to see if we're improving upon them. Are you guys, are, are you getting into the weeds in the sense that as Chair mentioned, the process, right, is, is important, and so there are steps in that process that we have to follow? Um, the delays that occur in each of those steps, are we identifying what had happened or what the issue was? To capture additional level of data to understand what the problem is, to be able to generate a solution to address specific problems within the process?
At this point in time, the only thing that I've always spoken to staff about the things that I've noticed, that's a real, I have, and we need to get into what's going on here. Is it because we're failing to communicate with it? Uh, and, and, and so it let things languish. Cause I think, uh, when, when you, when, when, uh, we, the, the commission has adopted, I think, uh, historically, uh, position of reproach, we bring, we, we say, hey, this is what's missing and ball is in your court. So how do we change that dynamic so that, so that if they don't respond, then there's some consequence there? Uh, that's, those are the things that we're talking about now. And I think the first, the first, the, the first evidence of that was, was the attempted first, the, the, uh, the application more than three hundred and sixty five days old. We need to make that part and parcel of our normal operational DNA. Uh, and beyond that, begin to think about whether or not we're going to use that methodology uh, for, for ones that are less than three hundred and fifty five. So does it make sense just to make sure that applicants provide the necessary information and documentation for for licensing to move forward on, on their investigation?
Well, and I think, um, you know, in terms of the timeliness of correspondence between uh, the commission and the licensed, licensed applicants, uh, certainly if we've asked for information from them and then we have to pester them for them more than once, we should record that so that if they come in front of us to ask for forbearance on their second temp, we have that kind of data to say, yes.
Yeah, and because, um, the, one of the, one of the things that, the items that the commission is looking at is whether or not don't wanna say fault, uh, it, it, where, where, where it lays in terms of that, I think, uh, having that information and having a, a, a standardized process makes it less likely that, you know, the quote unquote fault will be on, on the part of the.
And that's the process and technology part, the process of keeping, of keeping communications open and having the technology to either automate that notification and to provide a record of the notifications and communications that we've done.
To the next.
Yep.
Oh, automating all those things would be, would be helpful.
Okay, more questions?
Did you wanna pick twenty one?
Yes, we're gonna do twenty one.
And also, Commissioner, I, I'm looking forward to your recommendations, but I look forward to very much on the big swap.
Okay. Calling agenda item number twenty one, I would note in the record, uh, we have a complaint by Tom Berg, eyewitness of liquor taxation. If you would like to address it more to, uh, address the other items.
Okay, uh, investigation, so, um, you know that this one, the, uh, one of the recommendations by, by Wei Chan, who conducted some of you, was for us to randomize inspections. Uh, FY twenty five provides a nice example in that, uh, the year has basically been split between the old way of doing things and the new way of doing things. With the, with, uh, but just please understand that in the, in terms of the data we're looking at here, that the new way of doing things also involves a period where we were beta testing, uh, randomized, uh, randomized selection of inspections. So if you, if you look at the, at both of, both sides in the year, it looks like, hey, we've covered every zip code, we, we, you know, we, we've, we've looked at things and given the number of, of, of licenses that we have, it looks like we've conducted inspections on all of them, right? Assuming that, the, you know, assuming that the, that the inspection is all one offs and just, uh, single instances. You look at that and you say essentially to like, because, uh, in the first six months, you look at that and say, hey, you know, uh, it takes five point seven months to go through a cycle of fourteen hundred and eighty five inspections, given the average monthly, right? And the estimated frequency for that period would be one point one times, right? So simply put, you'd say like, hey, statistically speaking, a tenth of these should have a second inspection. So we should not be surprised that there would be multiple inspections given that, right? And then I, I did the same sort of analysis on the other side as well, saying, given, given the number of actual inspections and, and the average, the average monthly, we could have cycled through one point four times. So again, there would be, there would be an expectation that, you know, some of these would have a second inspection and so on. So broadly speaking, when you look at the, this particular table, you say, hey, I think we're, we're okay, right? Doing okay. Uh, however, Doug, next slide, please. When you look at the inspections, especially for the first six months, uh, you can see that one licensee was inspected eleven times. Uh, six hundred and fifty nine were not inspected at all. Four hundred and nine were inspected once and, and so on, and so you see that. I think, you know, despite the, the spread that we see there, I think what, what you see here is the fact that it's very much reliant on memory and memory of teams that change on a nightly basis and of, uh, of field supervisors changing, uh, on a nightly basis as well. Uh, and so I think, you know, uh, you, you look at that and, and you, you go, okay, what's going on? In fact, you look at the, for example, the most, what I would quote unquote say the most egregious one is the number of inspections of eleven inspections going on at one place. But when you look at the data, you see one normal routine inspection and ten shoulder taps. So I, I, again, it's kind of like, how do we define a normal inspection? That kind of brings to the fore that question. Do shoulder taps constitute, which essentially seeing whether or not somebody who comes out of a licensed premises uh, has i- i- is of age, right? Uh, do we count that as a routine inspection or not? You know, uh, again, uh, also, you know, if they're close, do we count that as routine inspection or just do we, we, it's, it's, until it, it cycles through to for the day shift to take a look at it itself. But I am aware that of the one hundred and twenty one licensees that were inspected three times, I'm aware of one that was inspected three times within a period of like three or four months. So again, uh, faulty, relying on faulty memory, uh, is, is not conducive to having uh, a consistent spread of, of, of routine inspections.
The process and technology of generating the randomized this provided some structure to ensure that you don't have to rely on memory.
Yeah, and it does, and, and you could, and you can see the, the, the difference between the first six months and the, the last, so second half of the year where, you know, uh, there have been, it, you know, like, four licensees were, were inspected five times. And then you see that nine hundred and sixty four were, were, were inspected once. I think that's, that, that's all, it, it, it shows an improvement in the way we do things. And, and again, I think once we get to the, once we address the questions of what constitutes a normal inspection, so shoulder tap or, uh, the, the, the closing time inspections, do those count as routine inspections? So when we drive by and stop by and say, hey, uh, you know, is, is anybody drinking beyond, beyond closing time? So we'll think, those are the type of things that I think we, we need to determine and, and then incorporate into the applications that are being, now being developed by our vendor. And, and so, you know, and I, I think a lot better in terms of that. And I think, you know, be, just because of the, of the uh, randomized inspection app that was developed in-house. Anecdotally, uh, our enforcement's revising investigator likes the randomized. But, uh, but yeah, but, but you can see, I think, the, 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 the benefits of, of having that and at least ensuring that, that inspection is routine and, and we're not so much open to the charges of being, uh, of targeting, uh, particular licenses.
Well, and to some extent, if you double the number of inspections of, of places a single time, all of those people can't go to another place eleven times or seven times or whatever, because they're, they're doing single.
We've taken out of the, of the, of the set.
Okay. But this looks really good. It was kind of what we were hoping for by.
And, and I have to say, it was really, it, it, it was, uh, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for the team for creating the internal, the, the internal app. Uh, just because we, we, we can, we begin to see what benefits can have from it. But we're also seeing how we can further improve the, 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 the application that's being developed. And also processes, like if it's closed, drive it to, you know, drive it to, uh, to the, to the day shift, which knock on wood, hopefully remains viable and, 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 and then, you know, and how do we do? Uh, and how do we, uh, record all of that?
So these inspections were random? Not, and it take, it does not include complaint driven or on view type.
These, these are just routine inspections of what we, what we, what we consider normal at this point in time. So I think one of the things about what, what's normal is, is, is we probably need to be a little bit more granular. Uh, like, for example, the reason why shoulder tap showed up is because shoulder taps are considered normal. So, so those are things that we really.
So is that six hundred and fifty something non-inspective acceptable?
No, it's not. But I think, but I think it just shows the, the weakness of a, of a, of, of a system that relies on the memory of, 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 of team, of field supervisors and teams that change on daily basis.
Okay, so I'm getting confused about when I hear memory, how old are these numbers?
Uh, so they're the fiscal year to twenty twenty five, so you got from July twenty twenty four to June twenty twenty five.
But I, I think, uh, there was some sense of routine of where the inspectors would go and the places identified as never having an inspector weren't even identified to really on the radar to be inspected.
Yeah, but that's why I was broken down by zip codes, right?
So, but I, I think though that, the, so I do think the six hundred and ninety, six hundred and fifty nine that were not visited were prior to the randomization taking effect. So now with the randomization, they're just choosing out of the numbers. So I think that first half, we talk about memory was more of that, well, we didn't go to this place yesterday, but next, today we're gonna go to this other one, but they might have went to that one, because it might be a different person that's running.
Yeah, but shouldn't that be logged so that?
I, I, I would say it should be, but I don't know if it.
Well, the definition is logged, but the intent to go out before you start. It was unclear how, how investigators were directed, uh, to investigate different licenses.
Yeah, they're gonna look at the chief and the supervisor.
It wasn't you, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, but one of the items in the, um, uh, in our legal settlement was to develop randomized piece of software on the technology side to change the process so that we could have some sense of randomization and to ensure that you're selected not because of any bias.
No, I, I understand that, but when you have one place that was inspected eleven times, that does not connote randomization to me.
No, 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 it doesn't. I, I think that was, that was, that was what we were trying to solve in the second half.
And I do, I, I would like to also reiterate, I don't, I think any, any marginal double-digit number in licensees that have not been inspected within any timeframe is unacceptable on our part. Now, I can see if it's no day shift, but I cannot think we should not be able to find a way to inspect everybody some way shape or form. Because that's also on them to be operating the way they should be operating within the license. So I mean, I think the randomization is, needs to be there, but I don't, I, I, I truly believe we cannot have a triple-digit number of places we didn't go, because that also shows we're not doing something correctly either. Not only.
And without the explanation, if you just look at the numbers based on the spreadsheet, you're I mean, all kind of questions gonna pop up from a legal person outside or a council member or whoever.
Yeah, and, and just, you have to say, you know, why we're close to, assuming it's all correct, right? Uh, why we're close to seven hundred licensees not, not, not inspected? Why did, you know, why was somebody inspected eleven times versus why was somebody inspected seven times or? And the, and the reasoning behind that. But, uh, the randomization application. And the and the reasoning behind that, but, uh, the randomization application. I think reduces that, I think that the second half numbers may also be affected by the two months of data testing. Uh, but I I think there there there's a, there's there's a real benefit to it. And, uh, and and in talking about the the last four months of the year, when you look at that. I'm talking with with with, uh, with Doug, looking at the data, it looks like we have not visited. Any licensee twice.
But but I think this is a good example of us collecting data and changing our processes and technology to support. Um, better operations with the agency.
Then I I think with this as well, then it it's easier for. Me to meet with the chief investigator and the supervising investigator of enforcement and discuss what we're seeing and what what may need to be done.
Yeah, I think it's a good, uh, start. We never had this before. Um, I think the the data needs to evolve, though, because on the surface, this is very flat data. I mean, we we want to dissect it more granular. Um, there's one way to think about it by expecting all fifteen hundred licensees. Um, that's one point of view. But from, uh, maybe from the banker mentality, there there's a risk. Uh, rating of those that are riskier than than others that may need more inspections than the others, repeat offenders. I know we have geography that that's good.
Large places versus small.
Small could also could be new in business versus seasoned business. So there's a lot of other different ways to look at it too. Because I think that what the goal here is is public safety with liquor, not just cover all, right? So I I think we could evolve it to cut it up different ways to know, uh, the effectiveness of the inspection program.
Yeah, I think, you know, I I I don't know what the development of the app will look like, but I think that there's some things that need to be taken into consideration, just beyond, beyond. You know, routine inspection, but I think at a minimum. We want to show that every licensing is least inspected, as to whether or not the the the. The cuffs come off after that, so to speak, and say, hey, we're looking at other factors to. Uh, to to drive the reason why, you know, some place, something that that. We need to, I think we 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 need to discuss and see whether that can actually be done.
But but we should be transparent in terms of what would drive your risk score higher. So that if you get inspected more than once, you know why.
Because you do by license category, so you could show it that way. These are, this is the breakdown.
And I dare say too, like, you know, when you look the first half, it may very well be part of that. The the multitude of 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 violations for a particular, uh, not violation, of inspections for a particular license may have been that. That, you know.
By category.
That, you know, there's there's there they, there's there are issues there, whether they're really large or there have been. Uh, multiple issues that maybe people look at, then then maybe it makes sense, but. Unless and until you really dig into it, the you, when you just go like, hey, wait a second, something's really, something's really oddly wrong here.
Yeah.
More question? Hey, then I would like to.
Did you want the update now? It's gonna be sure.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
All right, uh, yeah, well, yeah. Uh, so I I think the important thing is, uh, you should know that we conduct, we conducted the rest, uh, the. Investigators conference and that should, and there was, uh, there were modules on, uh, managing, uh. Managing aggressive behavior as well as de-escalation. I think it's important, and I think, uh, you know, uh, we had, we had, uh, representatives from from all the islands. Um, additionally, um. We provided HGA with responses to their second set of questions on Tuesday. Uh, hopefully that that will, uh, that will, uh, allow us to move forward with lighting on camera policies. Uh, soon, um, and finally, I think, uh, I saw some email today. That where we're trying to finalize the procurement of licenses for DEI training. Uh, as I told you last week, I think that we, uh, we have, we were able to, uh. Have ala carte or on-demand, uh, uh, setup training that we could have, and at this point, it's looking like not, uh. Not to say it's not 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 insignificant, but, uh, at least for fifty licenses, we're looking at approximately two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And with that, if there are any other questions.
Questions? Okay, I am going to recall agenda item number nineteen, mission with the performance evaluation that. A the evaluation of the administrator, is there anything we want to do in open session before we go into the executive session?
No, I don't.
Okay, and then so pursuant, I don't. Pursuant to Hawaii revised statute, section ninety-two dash four and subsection ninety-two dot five. A two to consider the higher evaluation dismissal of discipline of an officer employee where considerations. Of matters affecting privacy may, they may be involved in relating to the. Uh, evaluation of the administrator, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for this purpose.
So moved, second.
Uh, any names of reservation, saying none, we are in executive session.
The administrator evaluation. Okay, and so. Following agenda item number 23 commission any announcements?